I want you to bless our councilmen and council ladies, and we want you to strengthen them and give them wisdom in passing ordinances and statutes for our community. Help our community to be a better community and give them wisdom. In the name of Jesus, we will praise, magnify you, and ever lift you up for blessing our families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
If not, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Hutchinson, seconded by Councilman Sudler, to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now have before you the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and be considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council?
Accept the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Herron, seconded by Councilman Hutchinson, to accept the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sudler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskell?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Item number two is a proclamation for Neuroscience Nurses Week. I would invite Mayor Christensen and Dr. James Mill to the podium. And I would request that the city clerk read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas neuroscience nurses are a vital and indispensable component in the safety and quality of care for patients with brain and nervous system disorder. And whereas patients rely on the skills, knowledge, and expertise of neuroscience nurses who have a tradition of working toward patient safety and improving the quality of patient care, some of their duties include monitoring neurological exams, administering medications, and speaking with providers on patients' progress. And whereas neuroscience nurses work in diverse, challenging, and rewarding environments such as hospitals, outpatient clinics, and intensive rehabilitation units, regardless of the setting in which they serve, all neuroscience nurses play a vital part in helping this delicate patient population. And whereas their commitment is evident in that they have chosen a role that requires extra education and knowledge to provide the best possible care, more quality neuroscience nurses will be needed in the future to meet with increasingly complex needs of health care consumers in this community. Now therefore I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim May 18th through 25th, 2015, as Neuroscience Nurses Week in the City of Dover, and encourage all citizens to celebrate neuroscience nurses' accomplishments and show their appreciation, not just during this week but at every opportunity throughout the year.
Dr. Mills, on behalf of the members of the city council and myself, I'm pleased to present you with this proclamation. And I was told we're supposed to look at the camera. Smile. And I'd like to offer the podium to you for a few seconds, and then if you'd like to recognize your staff or the other nurses that might be in the audience, we have a copy of the proclamation. So, Dr. Mills.
Sure. Well, thank you, and thank you for recognizing the important work that our neuroscience nurses do at Bay Health and at all the other organizations within our community. But I really think also the neurosciences and the support and accomplishment and thanks goes to everyone in the community. We know that anyone who has personally or family members who have suffered any neurologic condition knows that it really requires the entire community to support these individuals. And so I thank the council, the mayor, and everyone in the City of Dover for all the support that they've given to our patients over the past few years.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your efforts. So if you'd like to call some of your staff now, if they'd like to come forward, we'll present them. Don't be shy. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Katie, you want to come down? Dr. Mills, these are the extra ones for the rest of your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Christensen. Item number three is a waiver request for the length of Dead End Street cul-de-sac and abandonment of the recorded right-of-way for the Northgate Center. Mrs. Townsend, would you please brief council on this issue?
Thank you. This is an application that had previously come forward to the Planning Commission as a subdivision application back in 2005, which was called the Stover Professional Campus. And that property went into, became bank-owned. And now there is a potential buyer for the lots on the south side of the property. This is just, if you're traveling south on Bay Road, it's just beyond the Blue Hen Mall property. But with the development plan that the new buyer has for the lots on the south side of the property, the loop road that was platted as part of the lot layout is no longer needed as they will be developing the full side of the property. So they need two things. One is a waiver from the length of the dead-end cul-de-sac. The code restricts a cul-de-sac to a maximum of 450 feet. I think the request that they have is 883 feet. If you go to page 53 in the packet, it shows the plan. And you can see that the lower side, that loop, the lower side of the loop would be abandoned, and the cul-de-sac would go up around to serve the remaining lots. So they are looking for a cul-de-sac that would be 883 feet in length, and then an action on abandoning the platted but not improved right-of-way associated with that. The right-of-way was never improved or dedicated, but it was part of the record plan. This went to the Planning Commission on May 18th, 2015, and following a public hearing where there were no members of the public that spoke in opposition, Planning Commission unanimously recommended in favor of the abandonment and the extension of the dead-end cul-de-sac to 883 feet. There's no public hearing required. Normally, this goes through a safety committee, and because we don't have the committees up and running yet, it's coming through to council.
My question is, we go from the Foreign Chief, is that going to meet your restrictions?
It's going to meet the diameter.
Other questions of staff or members of council? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council?
For acceptance.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Herron, seconded by Councilman Hutchinson, to move the acceptance of the Planning Commission recommendation. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, public hearing violation of the Dangerous Buildings Ordinance for property located at 742 Slaughter Street owned by Joe Burden, Jr. Request, Mrs. Townsend, to brief council on this item.
All right. Thank you. Again, this is property located at 742 Slaughter Street. I'll kind of give you a layout of the property so that when I refer to units A, B, and C, you understand where they are. A and B are in a building at the front of the property. Unit C is in a building at the rear of the property, and then there's a small accessory structure on the property as well. This particular property has had 42 code enforcement cases since 2001. There have been a number of interior code violations, electrical issues, structural issues, junked vehicles in the yard, junk and debris in the yard, grass violations, parking on the grass. Units A and B are registered as vacant. Their staff registered, the fee has not been paid. Units A and B were condemned by city staff on September 9th, 2010, due to structural and electrical concerns, and you'll see some of those in the slides. There was a period of time where there were utilities established in Mr. Burden's name. So while the units were condemned, we did find people living in them periodically. We then had a case for not having an active rental permit. We couldn't issue a rental permit because the units were condemned. Unit C, again, which is a separate building on the rear of the property, was condemned by city staff on February 2nd, 2015, due to no primary heat source, no cooking source, and a failed septic system. The rear building is on a septic system, it's not on the city sewer. Again, there's a $250 unpaid vacant building charge on the property. We are bringing this forward as being unfit for habitation, it's a threat to general welfare. There are multiple code violations, and they're unoccupied buildings. For the members of council that are new, there is a section in the code, Chapter 22 of the Dover Code, Article 11, Section 22-381, has a number of, I think it's 13, criteria that lend themselves to being a definition of a dangerous building. So whenever we give you a presentation, we tell you which of the criteria in the code it meets. So I'll walk you through some pictures. These are from units A and B. Now, some of the siding that is missing at this point is due to a structural engineering evaluation that was done. So that does affect the fact that some of the siding is missing. This is an exterior view. You can see that you have access to the upstairs unit. There's an upstairs unit and a downstairs unit. When you get inside, you can start to see holes in the wall. This shows a door in poor condition. Another door in poor condition, no doorknobs. This is an area where there's a hole in the wall that's been patched with cardboard boxes. This shows a light fixture that is hanging out of the socket, so it is hanging by the wires. This shows some more exposed wiring. This shows the kitchen, and you can see that the cabinet is moving away from the countertop and the sink. This is the stove. The front of the oven is missing. Again, this is another light fixture that's hanging by the wires. This is another light fixture that's in the bathroom that, again, it's sitting on the sink, but it had previously been attached and was no longer attached. So now you've got the electricity right there at the sink. Unit C, again, this is the rear building. The structural engineering report indicated that it wasn't, it was not believed to have been intended for residential use, that it was an accessory structure, but has been added to over time. This shows some of the deterioration inside the bathroom. Again, you can see that the plumbing's in poor condition. Again, this is one where there was no heat source. There was no stove or oven or functional kitchen. This shows, again, some leaking. This is the septic system backup that was identified. So the staff recommendation here is to declare the building, both buildings and the accessory structure on the property, as dangerous. To order the property to be repaired or demolished by June 26th by the owner, and if not repaired by that time, to order the building inspector, which is our Department of Planning and Inspections, to cause the repair or demolition of the structure, if not complete, by the owner within 10 days of that date established, which would bring us into early July. And then the final part of the recommendation is to order the city manager with the assistance of the solicitor to cause the cost of the repairs or demolition to be charged against the land on which the buildings exist, to be recovered at the sale of the property, if not prior. With that, I would take any questions you may have.
Councilman Sudler.
Thank you, Council President Slaven. When there is a new ownership, what does the code say about the allotted timeframe for curing the defective conditions of that unit?
The code is silent to the issue of ownership. We have found quite a few cases in the past, actually, where properties have transferred multiple times and the defects have not been corrected. When something is brought forward as a dangerous building, it is because of the condition of the building and the effect that it has on the surrounding area and the safety concerns that it causes on the surrounding area.
One more question. How long was Dr. Joe Burton, Jr. given to cure the defective conditions once he became the new owner?
All of the, if you, I'll go back to, the condemnation on this was done in September of 2010. So Mr. Burden, Sr. had since 2010 on the front building. February 2nd, 2015 was when our staff went in and did an inspection of the rear building, and it was truly not habitable. Again, it was the middle of winter, and there was no heat, no kitchen, and again, the structural report and no functioning septic, and the structural report indicates that it was not intended as a residence. But on building, or on units A and B, the front building, that has been in that condition since 2010. So we, I think our first letter to Mr. Burden, Jr., might have gone in April, March 17th? March 17th was the first letter that we sent to Mr. Burden, Jr. But again...
Was that 2000? I'm sorry.
2015.
15, March 17th, 2015.
Yes.
About this, okay.
Right, because Mr. Burden, Sr. passed away in October, so he was still the owner. But again, when it comes to the dangerous buildings, it's about the condition of the building and the hazard that that poses to the safety of the area surrounding it.
Thank you.
Councilman Neal, and then Councilman Anderson.
If the owner would decide to demolish the building at his cost, he would still own the land. Is that correct?
Yes.
Therefore, he could do and apply for whatever is necessary to rebuild or build another structure on that property?
Yes.
And that would be without prejudice?
Well, the Clean Hands Ordinance applies to anybody who's pulling a permit in the city, so we can't issue a building permit if there are delinquent taxes, utility fees or other fees owed to the city. So yes, he could build on the land provided he met those conditions.
Okay, so he doesn't lose that property. But however, if we demolish the building, and the city demolishes the building, then in essence, there would be a lien on the property to pay for the demolition?
Yes, and, you know, depending on the amount of asbestos that is determined to be in the properties and the costs associated with the asbestos abatement, there have been cases in the city where the demolition costs exceed the value of the land.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Townsend, I have a question about the two, there's two separate buildings, and are they connected in any way?
They are not connected. There are two separate buildings and then an accessory structure that's kind of like a shed.
So Building C is not connected, but A and B are one building?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
One is upstairs, one is down?
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to make sure, so it looks like those buildings have, there's very, you know, the A and B, it's like somebody could go in and repair it in the next 30 days.
I...
Building C looks like, quite frankly, it needs to be gone or something. So I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Councilman Herron.
Said the building, A and B, were condemned in 2010.
Yes.
Councilman Herron, can I ask you to use your microphone, please?
A and B were condemned in 2010. Why weren't they, why has it been five years, almost five years later, and we still haven't taken them down?
Because the property owner had indicated that he was planning to make repairs, and we've been bringing forward buildings in priority order, and there were other buildings that were in worse condition than this one.
So for four, four and a half, almost five years, we've just kind of let this one?
Well, we've been doing routine inspections to make sure that it stayed secure.
But I mean, but it's not being brought to code, right?
No.
Okay, I guess my point is, we've let it go five years, A and B, and I'm sure we're going to hear something tonight. But if the owner says within the next 60 or 90 days that he can bring this to code, or 120 days he can fix it up and make it habitable and meet all the restrictions, we've waited five years. I don't know what, given another three or four months would be a big, big problem if he says he's going to do that. Now, agreeing with Mr. Anderson, Building C, I don't know if that would really be worth putting the money into to fix that septic, do all that, but if he's willing to do A and B in, say, within the next 90 days or something, I'd like to hear more of what...
And we do have, the structural engineering report was provided to us last week. There are a number of structural concerns that would need to be addressed, so, and the corrections would need to be done in accordance with the recommendations of the structural engineer. So they're not small corrections.
No, but I just think it'd be fair to let them have that opportunity to fix those things. If they can't fix them, that's, I mean, that's their option, but they have to go in there, especially if the gentleman is, what he said, is he's done 12 buildings and brought them all where they need to be. I'd be more inclined than not to give him the opportunity to either say, yes, I can fix this and do it, or we looked at it, can't do it, we're going to tear it down, at least for 90 days or whatever we agreed on.
Councilman Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Emery, what is the total number of vacant buildings we have in the City of Dover right now?
374 registered vacant.
Okay, well, I'd like to think, and certainly council needs to keep them informed and certainly involved with the fact that our inspectors right now are maxed out on what they can do as far as day-to-day trying to keep up. That's one thing. And secondly, when someone reaches a stage where we are right now with Mr. Burden, and he comes in and says, okay, I would like to go ahead and do this and do that, before he does that, does he have to submit a business plan and finance plan to show that he's capable of doing it?
He does not. The challenge we have is the issue of the Clean Hands Ordinance and delinquent taxes and utility accounts. So we have not been able to allow new rental permits to be issued. We have not been able to issue building permits for buildings that were not deemed to be dangerous buildings. We haven't been able to allow him to move tenants into existing properties he owns because of the delinquencies that are involved.
Okay, buildings that we're talking about, are they currently up to date on taxes or are they on the rear?
This particular building, Mr. Koenig, you have a delinquent tax list.
742 Slaughter Street is not current.
Further questions, Councilman? Councilman Sudler.
Yes, on the, according to the taxes, how many taxes or how much taxes have been satisfied out of the total amount? Like, if you had like $300,000 that was due in total with all of the properties that Mr. Burton owned, out of that $300,000, how much has he made good, how much has he paid in good faith or satisfied?
I would defer to Mr. Koenig.
I cannot tell you at the moment what he's paid, but the current delinquency list has 64 entries under Joe Burden, Jr., or it looks like they're all, there is one under Joe W. and Georgiana S. There's 64 entries totaling roughly $25,000 in delinquent taxes. There's also an additional $27,000-plus in demolition liens that have not been satisfied. So just on the delinquent tax list, we're talking about $52,000-plus dollars.
And how much has he paid?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
I don't know. I could, I'd have to look that up.
Thank you.
That's the current, current-year tax delinquency.
Thank you.
Before opening the public hearing, I just wanted to place in context that this initiative to address dangerous buildings is something that came from the community, came from the people who live in these neighborhoods, who came to the city and said, we need to toughen ourselves up, we need to get serious about this. And I think we've done that over the last number of years.
Yes.
And this is the moment where really the rubber is to the road for a lot of these issues. Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. We now have a public hearing on this issue. I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? In favor of declaring this property dangerous? Seeing none, I'll ask, is anyone here who would like to speak against declaring this property dangerous? Against. Sir, if you can come forward and state your name and address with the record.
Sir, Mr. Councilman, my name is Bob Robinson. I'm a member of Dover, Delaware. I live at 52 Anne Avenue. I work for Mr. Burden. I was a homeless veteran. This man took me in, gave me a job. I've been doing the trade of building and requires on homes for 35 years. The property in question, I have spoken myself with Scott Engineering. I've worked with them hand-in-hand. We have took and went over a game plan of what we planned to do with this property. Some of the repairs that him and I have spoke about were already in the process, but then we were stopped work because of the lack of the permit, which was being denied because of the taxes. All right, we have no problem bringing the property up to code, like as you stated earlier. We've done 12 properties already, and as far as me working and everything, a lot of the inspectors have come in and been behind my work, and they have been very up top and spoke with me and said, you know, what you're doing is above, a lot of times, beyond what's actually called for. The question that I'm bringing to the council is the simple fact that... The question that I'm bringing to the council is the simple fact that the repairs can be made by myself within the allotted time that this gentleman spoke. We have no problem with that. But in here, once again, the permits. Granted, we'd be able to get the permits, we could take care of this here and probably less than the 90-day period. So, in my opinion, the home itself and everything is salvageable, and as I said, I've spoke with Scott Engineering. We've come up with a very good game plan, and Property C in the back, we have actually requested that, we use that just for storage, our materials for other jobs within the community. We're not sure how that's going about, but that is what we figured. I, myself, 35 years of experience, know that the building's not salvageable, but it would be fine for storage, you know, for our materials and everything, to upgrade the other properties that y'all have in question. So, all I've asked is, y'all might take into account that we are trying to rehab these apartments and these places and make them livable for the City of Dover. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to come forward and speak against declaring this property dangerous, Dr. Burton, again, state your name and address.
Dr. Joe Burden. Just to summarize everything that Mrs. Townsend said earlier, I just wanted to let everyone know that we have been proactive for the last, like I said, we were meeting with the whole council, the mayor, Emery, every two weeks from October to February. They were cognizant of what it is that we were doing. Somewhere down the line, I must, I don't know what happened around March 17th, but I, I don't know what happened, but it seemed like I was bombarded with bad news from the city. That same week, I got a, I called to come in to meet with Scott Koenig, and he, you know, he put a price tag on the, on the table that said, you pay me back $40,000 a month for the next three months, and you will be out of your debt. You sign this piece of paper, or else if you don't sign this piece of paper, I'm going to deny your services. I was upset at the time because I said, hey, well, where's my due process? I said, we've already paid back, and to answer your question, Mr. Sella, $32,000 since October for those different properties, for utility properties. My father was forced to pay back 16,000. His lights were being cut off for the last two years at his house, and what they did is they consolidated all tenants' bills and they put it on him. That was 16,000. I paid that all up. So, and they're aware of this, but the whole point is, I was under the impression, they said that we want to work with you. I told them that I was still in probate, and I told them, look, I don't have a problem with paying taxes. I'm not trying to duck taxes. My father's had these properties for the last 30 years. So, it, so, my thing is, Scott told me, and he said, if you don't pay these taxes or you don't sign this agreement by June 30th, then I'm going to be forced to sell all your houses in a munition sale. And he gave me the ultimatum. Now, my thing is, at that same point, he did stop my services, and over the last three months, that has stagnated my business to a significant effect. I have people from all over Dover that are calling me. I have people that I had promised going into these houses with kids, that I told them after this decision, because again, I wasn't given due process as to, I wasn't even made cognizant, I made aware that this was going to happen, until the meeting where Scott gave me the ultimatum. Either you sign this sheet saying you're going to pay me $40,000 at the first of the month or the next three months, or either I'm going to deny your services. And I pushed the piece of paper away, and I said, I'm not signing that, because at that point, I hadn't received any debt or anything from the city. They hadn't given me any document, they haven't given me any, you know, any, anything in writing. And the problem with that is, I was going to pay it at that point, but they said, K. Sass gave me a document that Friday, and it said 100, it said that we owed $105,000. By the time I got to Scott's meeting on that Monday morning, it was $125,000, and they said that there was an error in the paperwork. So, I just wanted to know, how did it go up $20,000 from that Friday when K. Sass sent the paper home, the document, and from the time, so during that meeting, there was an agreement that, hey, we don't have these numbers right. But I was never given any remedies, I was never given due process, it was still the ultimatum of them shutting my properties down.
Mr. Burton?
So, the point, the point I'm trying to make is, I think that this house should not be demolished, because number one, that same time, on the 17th, when, after I got the letter from Scott and my services were denied, that is when I received two letters from Emery Townsend for houses to be demolished. 128 South Queen, which was supposed to be brought up at this meeting as well, but that was taken off the meeting because we spent thousands of dollars with structural engineers, and we spent countless amount of resources refurbishing that house. If anybody wants to take a look at what we're doing, you can ride down Queen Street, you can look at several properties. So, the point I'm trying to make here is, 2010, you brought up something, and you said in 2010, why has this been floating so long? I was not aware that my father had structural engineer reports done, several on the same property, and it was, it was indicated on the property, the structural engineer report that this, that the engineer did an inspection on 2011 on the same property, and he found the property to be structurally sound, but somewhere down the line, the city kind of came back in and required me to do another inspection. Come to find out, that was done at several properties, that was done at, I was required to get a structure engineer for 128, and they already had a structure engineer report on file and on record.
I need you to come to a conclusion about this property.
So, the conclusion that I'm trying to make is, sir, I am proactively, and I want to break this stereotype right here on public record, we are proactively trying to repair homes in a timely manner. And again, like I say, my whole goal and objective here is to help people in Dover that need houses. Not everybody can afford to buy a home. Not everybody wants a home. So, my whole thing is, can y'all just back up a little bit and let the people in Dover who are taxpayers and citizens of Dover breathe? I do understand that there is a high emphasis and a high, and I understand now what they mean by target area, because we are being targeted in that area. If I, if I went and showed you all of the co-violations that I have, and the point I'm trying to make, sir, is I'm only one person. If I receive five dangerous building violations in one day, and I'm only here for one, I think that we are doing something very proactive. So, I just want to ask the council today that if you could give us 120 days to get this property available, when you ride by there in 120 days, you will want to live in it.
Thank you, Dr. Burton.
And the other point is, is there any way that we can remedy the relationship between the inspectors, the City of Dover, and myself, and other people in the community that I, that I understand or feel the same way? And I, like I say, I don't have a problem paying taxes, but you didn't give me a choice. You gave me, in that meeting, you told me if I didn't sign this right now, then, and I didn't even know that, that was the debt. The 120,000 was the debt. I didn't even receive anything.
Thank you, Dr. Burton. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak against declaring this property dangerous? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council?
Councilman President, I have a question.
Councilman Southern.
I have a question for Dr. Burton. Would you come back to the podium, please? Dr. Burton, do you know the amount that is owed on A and B for this property?
I just looked at the property taxes before I came here, and they were $442.
Can you pay that by June 30th?
I can, I will pay that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Southern. Thank you, Dr. Burton.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Townsend?
I just wanted to clarify that under the Clean Hands Ordinance, if something is a dangerous building, we can issue a permit. We can issue the permit for repairs of a dangerous building. So, the issue of the taxes on this property coming out of tonight is not an issue.
But it's an issue when you stop, when you stop a person that can bring money. I don't understand. I'm bringing money to the city. When you shut me down...
It wasn't a question directed to you. Thank you, I appreciate your time. The public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of council on this issue? Councilman, Councilman Anderson and then Councilman Hudson.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have, I'd like to make two separate motions. The first motion is that staff recommendation be accepted on Property C, that the building be declared dangerous, and that repairs will be, it will be repaired or demolished by June 26, 2015, et cetera. That's for C. And then I have one for, a whole different one for A and B.
Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson regarding Property C. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Neal. Discussion. Councilman Hare.
Okay, on Property C, can that property be taken and totally gutted and turned into, like, a storage building for A and B?
I guess I want to clarify, because the gentleman that spoke at the hearing mentioned using it as a storage building for the work they're doing on other properties. That would not be permitted. It is a residential zone, it is a general residence zone, so an accessory structure, yes, the answer is yes, it could be repaired as a shed, but it would have to be used for the building on the property, not for materials associated with the business. Well, you know very well that that tends to be an issue when there are businesses running in residential zones.
Oh, yeah.
So, I wanted to make it clear for the record. But yes, that could be done.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I am very sympathetic with Dr. Burton, and I do intend to support giving them the time to repair buildings, A and B, because, one, from a fiscal point of view of the city, we have a very limited amount of money for dangerous property demolition, and it's our habit that is, if private owners are either going to demolish it themselves or repair it, we want to use that money for the ones that they are either ignoring us or they can't, we can't find them. I mean, it would be a waste of our money and our limited resources to use it on properties that can and will be repaired. C, the reason why I made this particular motion is, C is one that I've personally heard complaints about from that area, and with the sewer backed up, I've definitely heard complaints. I think that needs to be acted upon immediately. Lincoln Park is a great historic neighborhood, and it's a core neighborhood to this city, and I think we have to really protect it to keep it from going downhill. It's very important that we do that, and I think C is beyond repair, and we need to go ahead and let them do that, do something with that, get it, either repair it or get it out of the way. I think the storage can be done with the storage shed that is on that property. Hopefully, the inspectors would be willing to let that be enhanced a little bit and repaired so that they, so that the storage shed can be used for locked and used for storing tools. I think that would be a better alternative. I think that's, I just want to explain why I made this particular motion for Property C. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? If there are none, I'll ask the clerk to repeat the motion.
The motion was to accept staff's recommendation for Property C and that it be repaired or demolished by June 26, 2015.
Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sessler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hutch, Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move that we amend the staff recommendation to allow for 120 days to, for the property to be repaired or demolished for Properties A and B of 742 Slaughter Street.
I'll second that.
And that appropriate permits be issued to accomplish it.
Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson, second by Councilman Hare. Is there any questions about the motion?
Question?
Councilman Hudson.
Regarding this delay, would the applicant have to come in and show a business plan and a financial plan and show that they're capable of taking care of the concerns that have been raised?
They would simply need to pull a building permit that addresses the repairs cited in the structural engineering report.
To my deep concern, delaying it is one thing, but when Mr. Burton or Dr. Burton comes in, he also needs to come in within the next 10, 15 days and show his capabilities of being able to show a business plan and a finance plan to be able to do what we expect him to do.
Councilman Sessler and then Councilman Anderson.
Being a contractor myself and a builder, I don't think that's necessary to show a business plan and a finance plan, and I don't think that that is normal procedure. I think that will be asking additional information that we don't ask everyone across the board. I don't agree with that. Thank you.
If I could...
Allow Councilman Anderson to respond, then Councilman...
Just let me, let me just share this, and my greatest concern, and as Emery indicated, we've got 375 vacant homes in this city, and from time to time, she comes in and she presents matters of concern like she did tonight. And how many times have we extended the time, and then at the end of time, we still have the same results? We can't continue to go back to have our staff and the inspectors do the same thing that should have been, we've already done once. And all I'm saying, we need to work together as a team. I have a deep appreciation for Dr. Burton and his management responsibilities and oversight and managing those facilities, but at the same time, I think he also has a responsibility when it comes to this issue. This didn't come up yesterday, this had been on the books, and quite frankly, we, this council, the staff, has done their job, and all they're asking for is, let us make sure that he's capable. The one thing that Dr. Burton needs to understand, without looking into his financial matters, he's got a lot of buildings and a lot of responsibilities. He's not going to be able to save every single building he has, and he's got to do a good job at using his resources and identify what buildings he's going to save and which ones he's not. And the city needs to work with him.
I agree, Councilman, but at the same time, it's not left up for us to decide and help him decide. I think that that's the privilege of being the owner, that he has that right, and I don't think, I think we'd be meddling too much to ask him to do a business plan. Do you know what a business plan is? That consists of executive summary and everything that is included in that, and maybe you may not want to use the terminology business plan, maybe you want to use something like a plan of action or maybe some deadlines, which I would agree, but a business plan, you don't use. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Southern. Councilman Anderson and then Councilman Hare.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think Councilman Hutchinson's concerns come from a well-placed concern that he wants to see, make sure that an action plan happens over all these properties, and, but, but we don't do that for anyone else. I think, once we open that door, it, the door of big government is into looking at something relatively simple. The only thing we have to care about is, is he capable of doing this within the next 120 days? We have his, his person, he's doing the repairs, he just testified before us that they could be accomplished in 90 days. We know from past action, when we've granted him time before, we haven't come back to those properties. Those properties have not come back for demolition. They've, he's actually kept his word, and we've had other people who have kept their word, and we've had people who have not, and when they don't, you know, that timeframe is done. And that's, so I think we have a track record. We can't judge him for the problems that his father ran into when the Great Recession came and turned his business model upside down. Before, I would point out that he actually ran a pretty good operation. When the Great Recession came, and he had a lot of non-performing properties... a lot of non-performing properties, a lot of problems happened. I'm not trying to make excuses, but it happened to a lot of landlords.
Yes.
Now, what's happened is things, that doesn't change the fact that things have to change. And that's why we made the motion for the dangerous property, the property that is a danger to the public, to be removed. These properties here are not a current danger to the public. It's, and that is a difference. It's a, it's a big difference to me between a property that's a danger to the public and one that is not currently inhabitable.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Herr.
Okay, very briefly, one, one concern I have is there this discussion of 100,000 versus 120,000. I don't know what that's all about. But, I think that should be addressed between Dr. Burden and city staff. Secondly, with the property, I'm in favor of giving 120 days. I don't care if he has a business plan. I don't care if he even owns a hammer and nail. I don't care. On September 26th, the property's either up to code or it gets torn down. Period. End of discussion. They said they can do it. That's it. So, that's, that's where, that's how I feel about this. September 26th, it is either up to code or it gets torn down.
Councilman Hosfeld and then Councilman Neal.
Yes, thank you. With the recent current assessment, what is the value of the property?
The yearly taxes is roughly $446,000.
$446,000?
About $130,000.
A little high. Do you have any idea what, is there a ballpark figure for what it would take to repair?
No, we, we only estimate the demolition costs.
Then my last question. City Manager Koenig, is there, I know there's always two sides to every story. Is there another side to the story that Mr. Burden elaborated on?
We did meet with Mr. Burden a number of times up through February. There were several meetings that were canceled. They were not rescheduled. So, we did have Mr. Burden come in, I believe it was towards the end of March. And at that point, we had a significant amount of back taxes. We have vacant buildings. We have code citations. We have past due water and sewer rents totaling, I want to say the number was $125,000. He was given a one-page payment plan to pay it off over three installments. He did decline. He said he needed to have his attorney review it and would get back to us. And we have heard nothing since then from my office related to a payment plan. Mr. Burden has always been free to come in and pay back taxes on anything. But, he was, at that point, when he declined, locked down, as he called it, from moving anybody into these properties. And if, if council so chooses to allow this to go forward, he'll be able to repair the property, but no one will be able to move into this property. He won't be able to get a rental permit. He won't be able to turn electric into a tenant's name because of the clean hands ordinance. So, until all of this back payment is paid, he is basically locked out of moving tenants in anywhere.
Councilman Neal.
I just want, again, clarification. It is my understanding if he pays the taxes on this particular piece of property, that he will be, have the permits necessary to make the repairs?
Yes, for this property.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lewis.
This is a question from Ms. Townsend. Is the property a danger to the public?
It...
In your opinion?
The, the dangerous buildings that we bring forward, we, we believe are a danger to the public for a number of reasons. Some of them, we find unsecure. The, a lot of the vacant buildings that are in states of deterioration have people living in them that shouldn't be. There is illicit activity happening in them. So, the, the ones that are the worst or of the worst are the ones that we bring forward to city council. So, is it going to fall down tomorrow? I don't believe so. But, does the existence of, of this building in its current state without repairs pose a threat to the community? Absolutely. And, and the problem is, we have many of these throughout the community, so we have to, we have to prioritize what we bring forward.
Because my concern is, and I don't know if kids live in the vicinity, but there's a vacant house in my community and kids broke into it. And, you know, that's my main concern is it being a safety issue with the public and children in the community, getting into that house, getting injured.
And that has been an issue. We haven't had this issue in a while, but for a while, we had quite a few vacant buildings that were becoming, you know, fire locations where people have gotten in, you know, more in the wintertime. Sometimes it's just kids doing mischief. But, but they do, especially when there are so many of them, they do pose a threat to the community.
Councilman Herr and then Councilman Sutler.
Sort of on the same subject, but just a scenario. My father owns 12, 15 properties. And he lets them run down and creates a lot of debt. And then he dies. And I inherit all that. Now, I've got 12 properties that are rentable because I brought them up to code. Got another one that, some other ones that we're working on. But, I'm not allowed to rent the 12 because of the back money that's owed. Is there anything that can be done to, where, I remember Mr. Rodriguez might have to address this, or we might have to vet it, I don't know, that says, okay, these 12 houses, because if I can't rent those 12 houses, I might never be able to get the money to pay you what I owe you. Is there some way that something can be done where an agreement is signed that says, okay, House A is rented for $1,000 a month and 700, and the rent will be paid directly to the city of Dover and the city of Dover will keep, or made into a trust fund or something. And the 30% of that money will be given to the landlord. 70% will be kept and paid to the city of Dover. I mean, something like that to try and eliminate this debt.
Mr. Koenig, can you respond to that?
Yes, the city cannot get in a position where we're collecting rent for a private entity. Mr. Burden was given a payment plan so that he could become current by the end of this fiscal year. And he declined. He didn't, he didn't, he did not submit a revision. He didn't ask for more time. He simply declined and left and left me administratively hanging because I have a fiduciary responsibility to the council and to the city to collect the past due taxes. It doesn't matter to me who he rents to, as long as there's a proper rental license. It doesn't matter what his rent is. But, all these bills are, are basically hanging on my back to collect. And I'm not getting any cooperation.
Councilman Sutler.
Quick question. I heard Dr. Burden say that he has 12 units, he's already has modified and has someone living in there collecting rent? Could I, could I ask Mr. Burden that? Out of those 12 units, Dr. Burden, do you have someone living in there collecting rent?
No, what I was saying is that we renovated 12.
I'm gonna, Mr. Dr. Burton, I'm gonna have to ask you to come to you.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm a little confused.
He said he renovated 12.
Okay, so he got a permit, he got a permit to renovate them, but you don't have anyone in there at this present moment?
Well, what happened?
I, I just want to know, do you?
Yes, what happened is, when I, when I first met with Scott in October, when we met every two weeks, the agreement was that I paid taxes as I went along through the properties. So, I paid property taxes and renovated 12 properties. Now, I was in the process of putting people into those properties, but that's when I started receiving the dangerous building.
Okay.
And I also received the, the, you know, the offer from Scott. And, and my thing is, I don't have a problem paying taxes. I was just not given a heads up. I wasn't even given any incentive.
I understand that, Mr. Burton. One more question. Are you able to pay the tax amount that's due so that you can be current and be able to rent your units out? Can you pay that? Or can you at least pay 50% of the amount that's due?
Well, well, the thing is, I, I, I had, because I've been stagnated for the last three months. And if you do the math, all of the money that I've invested, $32,000 in back utilities and taxes.
So, you can?
Plus, plus the $30,000 in repairs that we did. So, and that was my whole point. If, if, you know, I felt like if Mr. Koenig was up front with me in October and said, look, you have debt now. We, we're not going to deny you any certain, I mean, but they told me to...
But, we, we understand that. But, what I'm saying is, can you pay 50% of what is due now? Are you capable of paying that?
50% of all of the debt?
Of all the tax?
All of the debt?
Yes.
Um, I would, I would, well...
Because it would be, it would be redundant.
This is my, this is my goal. To make a long story short, my goal is, I understand that I have to pay the taxes before the end of the fiscal year. And the reason why I didn't sign the plan is because I know that that's my responsibility to do that. I didn't think that I had to sign a plan with Scott. I know that if I, if I'm negligent in doing that, my houses will be sold. And like I said, I, I don't think that we went 31 years and paying property taxes to the city of Dover and we're going to stop right now. The problem is, I was going through probate. I'm waiting for life insurance policies to come in and different funds to come in. And I thought that Scott would be, you know, sensitive to that. They told me that they would be sensitive to that. And then I, I don't know what happened.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Burton. We've got to answer your question. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson.
Don't go away, please.
Dr. Burton.
Dr. Burton. Because I have a very simple question.
Yes, sir.
And if I may ask, that we focus only on the question here.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
Can I interrupt for one second? I think just to be clean with Robert's Rules of Water, I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules to elect Dr. Burton to speak. Because this is outside the public hearing. I'll ask you for a motion for that.
Second.
The move by Councilman Anderson and seconded by Councilman Sutler is to suspend the rules to allow Dr. Burden to speak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Dr. Burden, thank, thank you for your indulgence. But, I wanted to know how, now, that's nothing, actually, I don't think it really has much to do with this motion, but somehow it's gotten into that. But, I'm curious about the probate. That can take years sometimes. Do you have any indication about where you are in the probate on these properties? And are, is it one property? I mean, is it one probate?
Well, technically, probate is a, technically, probate is a process.
Yes.
And it takes eight months before, when you're opening a state to closing a state. I'm not at the age, I'm, I'm not even legally eligible to close probate right now. But, what happens is, I turned in my inventory. And, and what I found out, because I was arguing with Scott with this about a long time, they started telling me that the properties were transferred to me. And, and I said, well, wait a minute. I'm, I'm not the owner of the property. I had to actually, myself, go to Kent County. And they said, oh, yeah, we were intending on sending you this letter.
Well, that, well, I was asking that question because it, it is, at this stage, I was asking about where you were in the probate. Because at this stage, you can't get a loan, you can't do any of that to, to actually do anything to pay the city back.
Well, that's not true. That's not true. That's not true. I am the representative for any state. I have the same power. I can sell property. I can rent property. I can handle it. I can conduct a business. But, probate, technically, quote unquote, you cannot, probate is a process.
Yeah.
And, and for, for creditors and, and so forth. So, I mean, and people, and really, it's all about debt. So, so, so the whole point is, that has anything, that has nothing to do with me in regards to my finances. But, what, what does have something to do is the fact that I can't, you know, I'm being stagnated on my ability to rent out properties. And, and I am, have actively paid back the city $40,000. And, and the other thing that I wanted to say...
The second, second part of the question is, the city filed anything in that essay claimant which has debts in the probate process?
Has the city filed anything?
Right.
Scott, Scott, the only, only thing I got from the city was when Scott called me in and he said, you owe the city $120,000. If you don't sign this piece of paper right here saying you're going to pay us $40,000 a month, I'm going to shut your services off. And that's what, that's where we are. I haven't received anything from them. Now, the other thing is, that I wanted to say in regards to finances, I have been in collaboration with the Delaware Habitat, thanks to Ann Marie Townsend. And we, we've had meetings. And I put together a property agenda. Someone over here said it earlier. And, and, and I've been explaining this to the committee the whole time. I needed to see what I was working with, what, what I don't have the time and the energy to, to, you know, to deal with. And, and I was going to sell properties. So, right now, I am in the process of being in collaboration with, with Delaware Habitat. From my understanding, they are supposed, supposed to get back in contact with me this week to make me an offer on a number of properties that Mr. Burden owed, owned in the downtown district area. So, hopefully, we can make that happen. And I will feel like I got a lot of pressure off my back to sell to the Habitat. So, people can do whatever it is they need to do. Just leave me and my family alone so we can eat and pay our bills. That's all I want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the issue? Call the question. Question has been, motion that called a question has been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been made by Councilman Herr and seconded by Councilman Anderson. Any further discussion? All in favor calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you restate the motion?
The motion is for approval of staff's recommendation for properties A and B as amended to allow 120 days for repair or demolition by September 26, 2015.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
No.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
No.
Mr. Slade?
No.
Motion passes six three. We now have item 4B, property located at 222 Reed Street, owned by Union AME Church. Again, a public hearing for the violation of dangerous building ordinance. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. Again, this is a property located at 222 West Reed Street. We have had three code enforcement cases since 2008, exterior violations, a damaged foundation wall, you'll see that in the, in the slides, broken window panes, trash and debris, flaking paint, paint, open outlets, exposed wiring. Utilities were terminated in January 2013 and the city registered the building as vacant in May 2013. On March 7, 2014, the city placed the property on the dangerous building list that we monitor to. No active utilities and open code violations. There is an outstanding charge of $500 for vacant buildings. Again, I mentioned that in March 2014, our staff placed it on our dangerous building list that we monitor. The, the way this property is structured, there's a house and, and a church on the same property. The church faces New Street. And the church came to us and said that they wanted to be able to subdivide the property so that they could then sell the house with the, the property with the house. They did not have the funds to repair or demolish it. In February 2014, the Board of Adjustment granted a variance for the lot size and the setbacks. It is a very small lot and the house is very close to the, the property lines. In March 2014, there was an application filed for a minor subdivision to create the new parcel. May 19, the Planning Commission approved this. The subdivision was recorded on October 29, 2014. So, because of that, what was going on during that period, we, we held off on bringing forward anything as a dangerous building. We've had, I guess, about eight months passed since then. So, now we're at the point where we are. We're bringing it forward as being unfit for habitation. It's a threat to general welfare and the, there are numerous code violations and it's unoccupied. This shows the, the building from the, the street. You can see how close it is to the church. I think it's four or five feet from the church building itself. This is from the rear. Show the deterioration around the windows. This is the foundation wall that is in poor repair. You can see the porch is in poor condition. And then again, when you get in, you see the issues. You can see some water damage right around the electrical socket for the light, areas where the ceiling is missing, exposed wiring. Again, more wiring that's hanging. So, again, we have, this is another one. We've tried to work with the church, but at this point, we believe that it, it needs to be, you know, very clear that either the building needs to be repaired or demolished, or the, the city will have to proceed with demolition. So, we, we've brought forward the recommendation to declare... So, we, we've brought forward the recommendation to declare the building as, as dangerous, to order the repair or demolition by June 26. If it's not completed within 10 days of that date, we would proceed with demolition and then place a lien. So with that, I would take any questions.
Questions for Mrs. Townsend, Councilman Anderson, and Nick.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. By the way, I want to thank you for the work you're doing. It's, uh, it's quite important in our neighborhoods across the city. Um, the, the question that I have is that you mentioned that it wasn't subdivided?
Right. It was all on one property.
So if we tear this down, will a lien also basically go against the church that would still be there?
Well, no, because at this point, they have subdivided it. They recorded the subdivision back in October. So now, it is a separate parcel, so the lien would be tied to that parcel.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yes, what was the last correspondence, um, the nature of the correspondence with the pastor regarding to that, uh, property? Were they willing to, were they going to try and rehab, or?
Um, they, they are more interested, based on what they've said to me, they, they're more interested in selling.
Okay.
Um, the property. I had actually given them some names. Um, I gave them the name for, for, contacted Habitat for Humanity and for another, um, person who's been looking at properties downtown that has--
Have they done, do you know if they have done that, or?
I believe they have made contact, but I'm not sure that either is moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mrs. Townsend? Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? In favor of declaring this property dangerous? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against declaring this property dangerous? Sir, could you please come forward and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Reverend Arthur Bacon. Um, I'm one of the trustees for the Union American Methodist Episcopal Church, and I'm the one that has talked with Mrs. We have contacted, um, both the Motis Group and the, um, Habitat. We have, we have since then boarded up the house. We, matter of fact, we had took, uh, um, and put signs up for sale. We just showed the house today. And if you, our request is that you give us more time to sell the house. The house is boarded up completely, and it's, we, we've had several calls to sell the house as is. And that's our intention as the, um, Union Church is to sell a house. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker before you leave the podium? Any questions for the speaker? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. Sir, you, you request additional time, but we can't have an open, uh, book here. How much time are you--
I, I understand, like I said, we, we boarded up the house. We, it, it, you can't get in it unless you take all the boards down. We boarded up the house, um, approximately a week and a half ago. As of today, I, we just had, went over there and we took the boards down off, and took a, um, a perfect, prospective client through it to buy it, and we're still getting calls on it. I, I, and, and I've already talked to Habitat, Humanity, and they're going to look at it, and I think they have already. I don't know whether they've called our bishop yet or not. I've also talked to the Motis Group. Um, my thing is, the question, when we've been getting on it, is that we may have a buyer soon. That's all I can say now. But, uh, our proposal is to sell the house as is, because we, we're, the, the church there can't afford to tear down or can't afford, uh, but hopefully, we'll get somebody to, to buy it.
Councilman Neal.
Are they aware that they're going to have to bring this house into code?
We told them as is, yes. And we've been showing them inside as is.
But that they're going to have to bring it to code? It's going to be at their expense to bring it, otherwise, it's still going to be a, a house that could be torn down.
Yeah, they, they know that, the ones I've talked to.
Any other questions for the speaker? Councilman Sutter.
From your feeling, uh, from talking with prospect buyers, um, how soon do you think you're going to close?
I've only, um, and, and I, and I've got to speak out of turn, because, um, I've been boarded the house up, and I put it advertising, but the bishop has been receiving the calls. We just took a, a person through today, and she said she would get back to us soon with it. I've also talked to the, the directive of, um, the Habitat. She's supposed to look at it, and then she's going to give my bishop a call with a offer for it. So I'm hoping, my hope, within the next month or so, that we, we want to get it resolved as soon as we can.
So 30 days, you would say, would be adequate time?
I, I, I think so.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Hosfeld.
We would then start this process all over again with new land, and we'd be right back where we're at.
Yes, sale of the property does not correct the problem.
Thank you, Reverend Bacon.
Thank you.
What is the, uh, is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak against declaring this property dangerous? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. President, I have a question for, uh, Ms. Townsend.
Councilman Lewis.
Ms. Townsend, how much does it cost the city to demolish these properties?
Typically, we're able to demolish them for between $10,000 and $15,000, depending on the asbestos content of that--
Can any of that money be recouped from anywhere? Or we're stuck with the bill, period?
It gets placed as a lien against the property, so when the property sells, we recover our, our funds. Or there have been some cases, we also will add it to the tax bill. So it's some, in some cases, it will cause things to go to the munition sale, and then we recover the, the funds that way. It's, it's a slow process to recover the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Sutter.
Yes, uh, for Ms. Townsend. Ms. Townsend, how, what is the allotted timeframe on an average lien? If someone receives a lien on their property, what is the average timeframe that they have to satisfy and cure that lien before their house is, um, put up for share of sale, or added to the taxes?
Well, the, the demolition lien, or the demolition charges would be billed.
Right.
And then it would go on the next tax bill.
Okay.
So sometimes it's a year before it gets on the tax bill. We, we don't take properties to munition sale unless it is two years tax delinquent.
Okay.
So typically, it's a two-plus-year process. And in some cases, there are other, other ways to recover the cost through, um, a lawsuit, for instance, but, you know, again, we don't want to spend more, um, recovering the money than we spent to demolish the house.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Neal.
If there was a--
Can I ask you to lean into your microphone?
If, if there were a bill of sale on this property, let's say by June the 26th, how long would it, we, are we able to give the buyer to bring that house up to code?
I mean, I, I would think, if, if you did want to give some time for the property to transfer, if you gave, say, 90 days, that would give time for it to transfer and for a new owner, i- if it was sold within a month, to be able to make some repairs. But if the repairs weren't made in that amount of time, then we would have to proceed with the demolition.
Would that be a continual process, or do we have to start over with the process?
No, it is attached to the, the property. So it, it, we've had several buildings that have transferred after council's action, and the new owner purchases the, the demolition when they purchase the property.
What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Lewis.
One more question. The $500 that's owed in fines?
Yes.
Uh, that would be taken out if, if the property was sold, correct?
Yes, that--
So we would recoup that immediately?
It's a vacant building fee, so that is a lien that's on the property.
Okay, thank you.
What is the pleasure of council?
I'd make a motion--
Councilman Hosfeld.
To accept staff's recommendations in regards to property located at 222 Reed Street, owned by Union AME Church.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Hosfeld and seconded by Councilman Paul. Are there any questions on the motion?
Mr.--
Councilman Anderson, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment, uh, to, as, uh, Mrs. Townsend mentioned, to allow, uh, that recommendation to take effect in 90 days instead of 30.
Is the maker of the motion amenable to that amendment?
Yes.
All right, so I will ask the clerk to restate the motion prior. Mr. Paul, second, or did you agree to the amendment as well?
No. No.
And I just make a motion for--
Now, a separate motion has been made. Can you state your motion for the record?
Make, I just wish to amend the 30 days to 90 days, so it'd be Sep- September 26.
August 26.
August 26, sorry, August 26.
Third, second to Councilman Anderson's.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is on the amendment.
It's on the amendment only.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutter?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
So the motion to amend has passed. Now we come to the full, uh, motion. Restate the motion for the record, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve rec, uh, approve staff's recommendation as amended to allow 90 days for demolition or repair by August 26, 2015.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutter?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Now come to item seven on the agenda, the setting of the public hearing for the electric fund budget. Staff recommends that a public hearing be set for June 8, 2015, at 7:30 as part of our regular council meeting.
Show move.
Second.
I guess that's the pleasure of council. Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Sutter. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number 13 is the first reading of a proposed ordinance number 2015-09 with staff amendment number one, SA number one. The first reading is offered on the following proposed ordinance, which has been referred to us by the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinance on June 8, 2015. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of council chambers or can be obtained by the city clerk's office. Mr. Koenig, can you brief us on this item?
Uh, thank you. This, uh, ordinance was discussed at the last Legislative and Finance Committee meeting, and the information tonight's, information tonight includes staff amendment number one. Going to start with the back, just to give a brief synopsis of the amendments. Proposed amendments clarify which laws are to be enforced, stipulates that the police chief selects the deputy chief, uh, police chief, creates a police chief selection committee, removes the special police section, establishes the police cadet program, brings the disposal of personal property held by the police department into compliance with existing policies and procedures, updates traffic and vehicle fines, and simplifies the language regarding violations and penalties, as well as amends Appendix F fees and fines to correspond with the language changes. And I can walk us very quickly through the changes from the beginning of the ordinance. Uh, line seven, there are some changes regarding state and federal laws. Uh, line nine and 10 includes, uh, the addition of the police chief and deputy police chief, where the police chief shall choose and appoint the deputy police chief as well as police officers. Section 6232, uh, is where there was the creation of the police chief selection committee as requested by the mayor. In green, there are some minor changes in the last line that reads in accordance with 11 Delaware C, uh, Chapter 93, Police Chief Due Process. It has to do with the potential removal of a police chief. On page two, there are strikeouts where we are proposing to drop language, including section 62-38 referencing special police. On page three of the ordinance under the police cadet program, uh, it really identifies the police cadet program and clarifies language where, uh, the cadets could operate, not just in the downtown area, but in the city of Dover. Um, and there are amendments, uh, staff amendments include lines 65, 66, 67, 69, 77, as well as 78. Down the page, the sale of property, this is the section where we're trying to get in compliance with other portions of the city policies. On page four, uh, this really got into the use of the payment meters at, uh, the Lockerman Way meter, as well as the Bradford Street meter, and, uh, just clarifying that payment can be made in a number of fashions, uh, outside of just coins. US currency by coin, cash, debit card, credit card, or other acceptable method of payment. There are some other minor strike-throughs, staff amendment. Section B under payments, again, the payments are to be made, uh, throughout the time range for the meters, and identifies, uh, the parking spaces associated with that. Uh, there is a strikeout, uh, in the staff amendment on line 121. Uh, as you move down the page to section 106-164, there is a lot of strikeout relating to violations, uh, which, uh, is clarified again on page five, line 142, which is the new label of B, where we're dropping, uh, the amount from $200 to $100 before, um, I guess that's before the boot will be utilized. Uh, and then there is a correction on line 62-167 regarding number C. And then there are corrections, uh, to Appendix F as identified throughout the document in red, green, and blue. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Koenig? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. President. Uh, may I direct a question to the chief?
Yes, please.
Chief Burnett, uh, there is, uh, one nature change that surprised me. I wanted to find out what, what the reasoning was, and that is expanding the cadet program to the entire city instead of downtown. Could you please, uh, explain that?
Sure. Um, all of, the cadet program will enable us to go out into the neighborhoods and to actually ride bikes and, um, and be seen. And I think it's important that the neighborhoods have the feeling of protection as well. That's why. And we didn't want to be tied down to just the downtown area.
Councilman Sutter.
I have a question for Chief Burnett. Actually, it's a statement. I want to say thank you, uh, for that. I'm in agreement with that. And, um, you know, I appreciate that, and I'm sure a lot of my constituents will appreciate that. So, good call.
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Councilman Hosfeld.
Uh, to the city manager, Mr. Koenig, regards to 6232, Chief of Police General, we're striking out, regular members of the police department shall be designated, one of the regular members shall be designated automatic service chief. Does that mean we're going to go out, we can go outside, just let the police chief?
Um, I believe the question probably is more appropriate for the mayor, but I think the answer-- The, the purpose of the amendment was to open up the selection to both internal and external campaigns. channels.
Other questions for staff? There is no action to take, so if there are no further questions of proposed amendments, I'll now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section 1-5 Dover Code. Madam Clerk?
Proposed ordinance, number 2015-09, with staff amendment one, amending Chapter 62 Law Enforcement, Article 2, Police Department, Chapter 106, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 2, Metered Parking, and Appendix F, Fees and Fines. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled to take place on June 8th, 2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now have item 14 on the agenda, the final reading of proposed ordinance, 2015-07. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of May 11th, 2015. Copies of the proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of the council chambers. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only.
Show move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Sutler, to allow the reading of the title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Proposed ordinance, 2015-07, amending Chapter 46, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 4, Public Occupancies, Section 46-162, sprinkler requirements in Section 46-171, fire alarm in place of a... Mrs. Townsend, can you please brief council on this?
Yes, thank you. This ordinance would bring two sections that are currently adopted by reference through the NFPA codes under the city's fire prevention regulations. It really just adds clarity, because again, they're already required through adopting the NFPA codes by reference. The first of these relates to allowing the fire marshal's office to strategically locate the fire department connections for buildings that are sprinkled in a way that they would be most conspicuous to the fire department. Again, this is already part of the Delaware State Fire Prevention Regulations on NFPA 13, which are both utilized by the city. The Second Amendment would reiterate the idea that a shunt trip switch is required in places that have amplification. And the purpose of this is that if the fire alarm goes off, it shuts down the amplification system so that occupants of the building can hear the fire alarm and know to escape. So, again, they're already requirements. It's just, this is something that has come up during our building plan review, that people will say, well, where is it in the code? And rather than send them to two different NFPA code books, because it does regularly come up, the fire marshal believed that it was helpful and more clear to, just to put it in our Chapter 56.
Questions for staff? Councilman Sutherland?
Yes. When there are fire code violations, is it standard that you place or identify the code with the violation when you send it to the...
When there is a...
Owner?
A violation notice sent, that the code is referenced in the violation.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council?
Move or accept?
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Hare and seconded by Councilman Hutchison to move the acceptance of the proposed ordinance. Ordinance? Are there any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Sutler?
No.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hossfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
We come to agenda item number 15, council members' announcements. Are there any announcements from members of council or staff? Councilman Sutherland?
The fourth district had their first quarterly meeting. It was very successful. I'd like to thank Councilman Hutchison for coming out and supporting us. We also like to thank the other council persons that I know would like to have been there, but due to, you know, FOIA, they were not able to be there. And I would just like to say that I will be going to other council persons' meetings in support of them and in support of the entire city, because not only do we represent each district, but we also represent the city as a whole when we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sutherland. Other comments? Just offer a comment to the general public that the budget hearings for our fiscal '16 budget will begin tomorrow evening, May 27th, at 6:30 in this chamber, followed by meetings that are scheduled on May 28th at 6 o'clock, and on June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd at 6 o'clock in this chamber, if meetings are open. There's no further business before us. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Been moved by Councilman Neil, oh, sorry, Councilman Anderson?
Just to...
You saved us from adjournment?
Just quick technicality, Mr. President, you might want to declare the vote on the legislation that had passed.
I'm sorry, the vote was nine to zero. Six to three, sorry.
And it passed. Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right, so it's been moved by Councilman Neil and seconded by Councilman Sutler to return. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.